This meeting is the Dayton Conservation Commission. Public meeting agenda Thursday, January 18, 2024. Would everyone rise please for the opening of the meeting? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, let everyone know that this meeting is being recorded and televised on local channel. Okay, do we have the minutes?
Have a paper agenda, any chance? Please.
Lisa, the minutes have not been published yet.
Morning, last, desktop's been down, she's got it fixed, so she should be finishing those for the 31st.
Okay.
I told her I'd like them while in advanced 31st, not the 31st, yeah.
31st, okay. The minutes that we need to have approved have not been printed due to a malfunction in the computers. On the agenda, next on the agenda, we have a review discuss act, a continued public hearing for abbreviated notice of resource area delineation known as an Enrad from Cowell Rebello Bill Farmer State seeking confirmation of wetland resources at Zero Milk Street, map 17 lot 109, 135, and 208, DEP file number 17-489. Weston and Sampson, our peer review consultants are reviewing this project. Lisa, is that a continuation?
Yeah, it's a continuation, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to continue?
I make a motion, we continue. When will that be, February meeting?
Yeah, February 29.
February 29, 2024.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Okay, we're going to take Zero Elm Street, the next item on the agenda, we're going to defer it to later in the agenda since traffic in East Providence, our Providence area, is limiting the time that the, or exceeding the time limit that the agent thought he could make it here. So we will come back to that later on in the agenda.
Consultant.
The consultant, thank you. Okay, review discuss act on a continued public hearing, the notice of intent at 1886 County Street, map 17 lot 84, from Truck and Trader LLC for construction of stormwater basin within a flood zone and subject to flooding, DEP file number 17-493. Proposal requested from Weston and Sampson. Lisa?
Yeah, so we have the proposal. Did you get a copy of it?
I believe Niles did, yeah.
Yeah, he did.
Okay, so what we're looking for here then is you're going to make a presentation and...
Well, they are...
We did our initial presentation, so now I think we should probably just continue because they're going to review it and then we'll come back.
Okay.
Yeah, but we need a chat, but you guys can take a look at it while you're all here. This is the proposal. I had emailed it to each of you, but now you have it.
This is the same scope of work that you presented last?
Yeah, it's to review, the resource is actually a flood zone and it's to review, it's freshwater flood zone, right?
Um, yes.
Second answer, correct.
Yeah, it is freshwater.
Well, it's brackish too. I don't know where brackish fits in.
Brackish, but Brook Street is the cutoff, there's a dam on Brook Street, so that's where the freshwater stops and then it's salt and freshwater mix.
So it's brackish.
Oh, so idea solved, yeah.
Yeah, so it's...
Did you get DEP comments yet, technical comments, do you know?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. Nothing that I've seen.
I'm going to look. Just give me a minute, test, don't hold him on yet. You guys, I know you're...
Holding the lineup.
That means we're going to be talking about 30.
Okay, so we have to vote on the sum of money that Weston and Sampson want to charge them?
Yeah.
Okay, so that'll, and that'll go into 53G.
Yes, so I just want to remind everybody like what we went through with the Mullins and the Forest Hills. So tonight we don't have a formal presentation on this one, but if we had, we would have to have the two members that are sick that are going to be voting members on this, watch the meeting and sign off. And you can only miss one meeting when this substantial information presents.
Okay, well, tonight is not going to be a substantial, so there's not going to be...
It was just a notice, I guess.
I was just letting you guys know, yeah, it's coastal storm flowage, so that answers that question, and they didn't have any technical comments. But Weston and Sampson, if you guys are good with that, any comment on that?
Okay, Jack, I circled the amount of money that we're going to want Truck and Trader LLC to fund the peer review account of, what, the sum, was it 2,000?
No, 3,000.
3,740 dollars.
Okay, is there a motion to require Truck and Trader LLC to set up a peer review account of 3,740 dollars? Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we carry that forward. Truck and Trader LLC submit a check for 3,740 dollars in a 53G account.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so they're going to have to submit that and that'll be, okay, I'll just put it over here.
So once the check clears, then, yeah, it's signed by the town administrator and then they'll start on their review. I guess they already started their review?
They did a review for planning board already.
Yeah.
And we're in the process of figuring out those changes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Just so I don't forget to remind you.
Okay. Changed.
Okay, review discuss act on a new public hearing, it's a notice of intent at 251 Main Street, map 20 lot 78, from Kim Smith for a septic upgrade with a new septic tank, Leach Field, and associated grading. Okay, this is in a flood zone. A portion of the project is within the 100-foot buffer zone to a bordering vegetated wetland, file number 17-494.
I don't think they can get in.
They're not now...
You shut the door hard, I thought it was locked.
If you, Lisa, if you pushed on...
He's got it, he's got it.
If you pushed on it and it went in, it's not, that means it's locked.
Oh, yeah, I guess it must have locked again.
It wasn't, probably, the key part wasn't turned enough.
Yeah, sorry about that.
So Lisa, I have a check for the legal ad.
Okay, which one are we on again?
251 Main Street.
Oh, we opened that one already?
Yes.
Okay, great, yeah, no, I was just following up with something, a continuance form.
Is there anything else that you needed? Because I don't know exactly what Darren had submitted.
Yeah, so I needed proof that the letter, so, not letter, but the application was submitted to me without an application signature.
On the NOI?
Yes, so I told Darren I needed a copy of the app, I needed an original signature by the applicant, and I needed to make sure I had that by the meeting. I guess it came from New Hampshire?
Yeah, this copy doesn't have the applicant signature on it, the one he gave me.
Right, so, let me call my assistant, I hate to bother her, but see if she did follow up with Kim. And I also had to get permission from the new owner to be able to walk on the property. She might not answer, she's probably put my kid to bed.
Do you have any copies of that?
Of the plan, yes.
Please.
Jason, I have them over here. Were you able to find out? Sent the letter, the guy, the signature.
Well, this is where you enter the lot, ICI, to lots of them. Because it's four bedroom.
So, I mean, that's important, you need, yeah. That, to me, that should have been an incomplete application, but I was on vacation when that application was filed with us.
Right.
And I didn't catch it until I got back, and as you can imagine, I was swamped.
So how do you want to move forward with this?
Well, if I can find out if my assistant got ahold of Kim, do you have her phone number?
I don't.
No.
Do you need the...
Yeah. Well, I mean, if we continue it, you guys can always just pay it directly, but we'll do it this way.
Now, on the east side of the driveway, you can't put the septic there?
It's not big enough for it, just based on the size of the system, it just doesn't fit there.
Okay.
Is the house currently three bedrooms or four bedrooms?
I believe, it's not being increased, so it's four bedrooms.
Okay.
It is a repair, they're not, they're not increasing it.
Yeah, so it was sold, the property was sold, yeah.
So now this property, okay, Lisa, this property was sold, who's doing the septic repair? The previous owner or the new owner?
The previous owner, but she never signed the application, that's who I'm trying to get the signature page from, yeah.
Okay, so, all right, so we're in a delay mode then.
I asked for it over a week ago, and I guess it was being sent from New Hampshire.
Okay, that doesn't take weeks, our electronic signature or...
No, I can't do electronic.
Okay.
We don't accept electronic applications yet.
Okay, all right, so what can you tell us about it since you are here?
Yeah, let him...
And then we'll continue it.
So, like I said, it's a septic repair, not new construction, no added bedrooms or anything. When they went to sell the house, they had the failed Title V, so now they have to operate it. So it's a four-bedroom, so a sizable field. So, I shouldn't say that this area isn't big enough for the system, but it would require variance to the property line, the distance to the property line to be able to put it there. But the actual land area is big enough for the field. Right now, it's meeting the setbacks off the property lines. The only waivers that were requested were separation of groundwater from five to four feet, because it was perp less than two.
You guys did perp it already?
Yeah, yeah, so it's all been perp, it's all been, I believe, approved by the Board of Health, definitely submitted.
Okay.
It was approved, yeah.
All right.
And so I did have one edit that was made to it, was, we found out, actually, two edits, but I interrupted your presentation.
Oh, go ahead. I like that conversation better than a straight presentation.
Okay, that's good. It's a bad habit I have, but we figured out that the site is within a flood zone and then, so it's coastal storm flowage because it's south of Main Street. But then, I looked at the DEP notes, the technical notes, and they said it's also bordering land subject to flooding, which means it's also freshwater. So there's two components here, there's, Maricov must be freshwater.
It runs right through it.
Yeah, you know.
There's a little dam back there.
Yeah.
And when that reigned, it floods the little pond, and it goes right up into those cattails, almost into that backyard. And at that point, it runs over 138 from the barber shop to the, to the bridge almost.
So do you think that well-in delineation is accurate or no? Because I think it just kind of marked the edge of the fragmities, is what I thought. Yeah, so, all right.
I haven't been exactly there and I don't want to speak, but I know it's damn close.
Yeah, the flood zone definitely comes up.
Right, yeah, the pink line here is the flood zone, so this side is outside, it's a AE elevation 14, so that's the contour here, comes into the side of the house, then wraps around the house, and comes up this way. So the flood comes up here and up here.
So three-quarters of the field is in the flood?
Right, and even if it was...
How high are you going with the field?
The top of the field is 14, 14.3, so it's three tenths above the flood elevation.
It's got to be high.
And that, that's the 100-foot flood, 100-year flood?
Yeah, I believe, yeah.
Which is probably now a 50-year flood.
Could be.
Okay, so, so what we're going to need then is...
Signed application.
Signed application, and, is that it, Lisa? We don't need any additional?
No, I got, I got permission from the new owner, so now, you know, the whole thing is a preissue and order of conditions, and I need to walk on the property, and the property owner's saying no, then we're in a conundrum.
Well, then, they're at fault for themselves then.
Yeah, they won't be able to move in if they don't get this done.
Well, they already live there.
They do.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
It is interesting.
Okay, so, again, once we get the, the signed documents...
It looked like they already lived there when I was there, I shouldn't say they already lived there.
I thought someone's been moved in for two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, so once we get the signed documents, then we can give our order of conditions for...
Well, so, yeah, do you guys want to close on it, continue? But the problem is, if we don't receive it, then what do we do?
Well, we would have to do a conditional.
Yeah, could you just add a condition that you would be able to get the sign off and then you get the, the signed application page?
Yeah, so, I guess, it's just tricky because we don't want to have to reopen. If we never get the signed application, then we already closed the public hearing.
Well, we, could we put this on the 31st and just, and just have it, close it then, it would take, it would take two minutes to close it then if we get the paperwork.
Oh, yeah, because we are meeting on the 31st.
You wouldn't have to come.
We already posted that agenda, but, yeah, we could do that.
We could just have that in.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll talk to Darren about getting the application page signed.
Yeah, I mean, he knows, I told him more than once.
And if that, and if they don't do it, then it goes to the end of February.
He's saying no.
Which will be a whole month, which is six weeks from now.
Right.
All right, so you're going to continue it.
Okay, is there a motion to continue to January 31st?
Make a motion, we continue 251 Main Street, so, January 31st, 2024.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that, so that would be a very quick item, you wouldn't have to be here, we should just notify you of that, and, because that, that 31 date is actually reserved for something else, which we have to deal with.
Great.
Okay.
We're going back now.
Okay, all right, I, okay, we're, are you here for another one?
Other street. I'm going back to that now.
All right, okay.
We're going to close, we closed it?
So who's going to be chairman? Yes.
Okay, why don't you be acting chairman while I step down?
I didn't know if you closed it.
No, we didn't close it, that's, we're going to continue to...
Oh, continued, continued, yes, yes.
Okay.
This is going to be the chairman call.
Okay, Jason, he wants you...
Phil's not the chairman anymore.
All right, do I have to say Phil?
We've got sick people, two sick people.
No, you can sit wherever you want, you can sit where you want, so many people are sick.
Yes, we do, I'm calling Dave right now, that's, yeah. Dave's, so we've got to add Dave, Dave's chiming in at 7:23 for this hearing, so we can hear presentation. Dave will have to also watch the presentation. Hi, Dave, you're on speakerphone at the meeting.
Hi, Lisa.
Hope you're not too sick for this. You're going to have to watch the presentation as well, so, you know, according to the Mullins stuff.
Yes, I'm actually watching it now, Lisa.
Oh, great, okay, perfect. I'll leave it up to you guys now.
Okay, Tom Morris with Zions Consulting Engineers.
Can you hear him?
Yep.
Okay.
So, last time we were in, I just did my general opening presentation. Since then, this has been approved by planning board, and we've responded to the NOI review comments from Weston Sampson. We believe there's nothing contentious, we believe everything should be closed out. But, you're from Weston Sampson, right?
That's right, yeah, yeah, I'm Jim Reardon from Weston and Sampson. I don't want to interrupt the flow of things, do you want me to?
Yeah, I think it's a good time for you to step in and just to go down, I mean, I don't know if you want to start with your first iteration of what you guys had commented to the commission, yeah.
All right, so, should I go from here or should I bring the keyboard up to the podium?
Dave, what do you think?
Probably, you are presenting, probably better...
From the podium, right?
Yeah. Oh, not you, there's another Dave, it's the table bag.
Yeah, it should, looks like it's going to work fine.
Get a line site, should be good.
Perfect, all right.
Great.
So, again, I'm Jim Reardon, I'm from Weston and Sampson, the, the project manager for this review, and this is, of course, Zero Elm Street project. This is the project site, so, you know, locust map, which we excerpted from, oh, sorry, I keep clicking on that, which we excerpted from the, from the applicant's materials. There we go. These are the materials we received, this is all detailed in the peer review letter that we sent India. There are four basic sets of materials here, the letter to the Conservation Commission, storage facility site plan, stormwater report, and the WPA Form 3. And as was mentioned previously, we're also reviewing this for the, for the planning board. So Lisa mentioned a moment ago, like, there've been two reviews on this, one that was done in early December, I think it was the 5th, and then another one that was done just before Christmas, I believe we have that one dated, the 19th. There were some administrative items in the NOI that, that we brought up, and they're listed here, pretty straightforward things, I think. The, the address needed a little bit more information, or we had requested it. As it turned out, the, what we had request, what we had requested was a street address, and there is none that's assigned to it, because it's Zero Elm Street. Phone number for the applicant, there is a box that wasn't checked on the form, that was box number three, that's been since corrected. Proof of payment, we asked for that to be confirmed by the conservation agent. Map updates, there were several map updates, none of them were terribly substantial, they were just including, you know, things like Habitat on one of the maps. There was an item on the firm map that we wanted to see included or clarified a bit, and all that was done in the second set of materials that we got. The ORAD recording and photo log.
Was that done, was the ORAD recorded?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have the deed booking page on the cover sheet of the plan.
Okay, great.
And then there were a couple of technical items, too. One was use of a 25-foot buffer versus a 50-foot buffer. We feel that this is up to the discretion of the Conservation Commission. They've delineated 25-foot, as I recall. There was provision that the SWIP was going to be included at the time of approval. We don't have disagreement with this approach, but we wanted, of course, for you folks to, to take a look at that, decide whether that's appropriate from, from your perspective. And then further peer review of the stormwater management aspects of the project. So, a couple of things about this, so we did review storm wonder water initially under the planning board materials that we received, and we incorporated those into the first review. They were addressed and then in discussions with town staff. We know, obviously, that there's a storm... We know, obviously, that there's a stormwater commission that's supposed to provide advice on this, and so we asked how we should proceed, you know, how we should sequence things to make sure that they were appropriate. And the decision at the town staff level, they would recommend that this go to the stormwater commission before it's formally approved by Conservation Commission. Sorry, Stormwater Committee. And that's basically it, as was mentioned earlier, the fairly straightforward review.
Great. We should open it up, though, for public comment, because I know there's at least one person here that might want to say something.
So I have to ask?
But you can, if you guys have anything you want to discuss or ask first. You have any questions?
You have any questions?
No.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions?
I have a few questions, but I have a comment from Stormwater Committee. Nancy Gulatz, Chairman, Stormwater Committee. So Mr. Reardon was zoomed into our meeting yesterday, and told us that Planning Board in CONCON, after the work that's been done, decided that Stormwater needs to weigh in on this. So to follow the procedures that have been set up, I sent an email to Mike Mullin, telling him that it came up at the Stormwater meeting, but we did not discuss it in detail, and asked Mr. Reardon to hold off on his report until we can get copies of the records from the work that's been done for planning in CONCON. So I'm waiting for Mike Mullin to get back to me, telling me that that's okay, and we're going to get the records. I told him, if this project is a priority, we can schedule a special Stormwater meeting to do the review and to get more information. We'd probably want to do a site visit. If it's not, you know, extreme priority, we'll put it on a regular meeting. So again, I'm waiting to hear back from Mr. Mullin, and then the Stormwater Committee will know the next steps, and we'll be working also with Mr. Reardon from Weston and Sampson.
Thank you.
I think there's anyone else here that...
Does anybody else have any questions?
I just have a question. Procedure with the Stormwater Committee. Does the conservation approval have to come after Stormwater? Or would you guys be able to approve it, and then construction is still pending on...
I think Stormwater takes precedent over the water.
Yeah, I think so, too.
The responsibility of the Stormwater Committee is enforcement of the Clean Water Act. CONCON is the Parks Protection Act, both federal statutes. CONCON and Stormwater pretty much work hand in hand. When we are both, when both the CONCON and Stormwater have interest in the project, we usually determine who's going to take the lead, because if there are problems, they're usually connected. So whoever takes the lead, depending upon if they're more serious CONCON items, when those are resolved, usually Stormwater is, and vice versa. In this particular case, because Stormwater has not been involved in this, and there is a recommended recommendation from the town engineer, Weston and Sampson, Stormwater has got to look at this first, because if CONCON says, "Go ahead," and you think you're ready to go, and Stormwater looks at it and says, "Wait a minute, we've got concerns under the Stormwater by law regulations," which you get under the Clean Water Act. So that's why I put an email to Mr. Mullin. If this is a project that really needs to prioritize and get going, as soon as we get the paperwork, we can schedule a special meeting. We meet the third Wednesday of the month. If it's not the rush-rush thing, we'll put it on the regular February agenda. I'm waiting for him to get back to me. But if we had been involved initially, we would know there would be something from Weston and Sampson about Stormwater as far as our committee goes. So right now, we're kind of just waiting for whatever information is available. But again, if we have to schedule a special, we will, but right now, I don't know. I expect to site visit. We know that's contingent on weather, so...
So we two hold this?
Yeah, and to answer your question, I mean, if you say we did close, then if there were any changes made by the Storm request...
We have to reopen.
Yeah, so you don't want to have to go through that.
Yeah.
As I said, we usually work hand in hand, and I think when we see the information that has been put together, the reports for planning and CONCON, it may be just a matter of discussions of what does this mean, or what about this, does this apply here? And as I said, I would expect Weston and Sampson will have something relative specifically to meeting with the Stormwater Committee to address that location on Elm Street.
Sure.
Thanks, Nancy.
Yeah.
So procedurally on this...
All right, it's continued.
Continue with...
The date and the next. Yep. February 29.
Continuing Zero Elm Street to February 29?
2024.
2024.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM. All in favor?
All in favor.
Is he sleeping?
Are you there, Dave?
Yes, I am.
All in favor?
David Phillips is an aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, Dave, did you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you want to go?
No, I'm tired. That's okay.
Yeah, go feel better. Dave's leaving the meeting at 7:36. Thank you.
Right, yep, that's what we found out.
Do you want this copy of your prints back?
Sure.
Thank you.
And so we're going to be seeing Jim a lot. I just want you guys to get to know Jim and...
What's up, Jim?
Hey, Jason, how are you doing? I'm doing well. Very nice to see you all. Some of you I've met before, and appreciate being here this evening.
Of course.
Okay, next on the agenda...
Thanks for making your way over.
You're welcome. Do you need me to stay around, or are you all set?
No, we're good. Yeah, we just, we voted to approve the other one for Truck and Traders, so, right before you came.
Great, all right.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Yes, oh, you're all set.
Next on the agenda is to review Discuss Act. It's a request for certificate of compliance for a new single-family house, 449 Brook Street, map 17, lot 160-1, file number 17-451. Lisa, you've been there to the site for...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've been there several times. I think I told you guys at the last meeting last time I went to the site.
Is that under the power lines?
Yeah, I noticed there was some, there was a group of people with armors on, and they were digging, and I said, "What the heck are you guys doing over there digging next to the wetlands?" Oh, we work for Public Archaeological Lab, and we're working under National Grid. In any case, I connected Tracy, she's the engineer, with VHB, and we figured out that they did not, in fact, dig up a portion of the compensation, flood compensation area, which was great, great news.
Correct.
But if you want to present...
Yeah, I don't know how much of a presentation you need, but I'm Tracy Duer. I'm civil engineer and BLM development. I'm working for Michael Binder, who was the original owner at the time that we submitted the notice of intent, and it was for a single-family house, septic system and driveway. However, the only portion of the proposed work that was within the buffer zone was the driveway to actually get into the site, because there's a large, isolated, vegetated wetland at the front. And in order to get in and do that tiny bit of driveway, we had to do a small amount of compensatory storage, which is on the other side of that isolated land, or I'm sorry, isolated, vegetated wetland. We prepared site as-built plans. Everything was built according to the way it was proposed. So the house and septic are outside of the 100-foot buffer zone. The driveway is where it was supposed to be. It was proposed at original grade. There was no fill there, and it was built that way. As Lisa said, National Grid, who owns or has an easement running through the site, was doing their own test pits that they hadn't done notice of intent for. VHB has since worked with them to stabilize it, so to speak, and have erosion controls, but that's, you know, unrelated to the property owner, but I just wanted to let you guys know that we did go out there. There is erosion control for their test pits, and we still have the original erosion control around the front of the compensatory storage area. So once they built it, we put erosion control around the front, and that's still there. So we're going to keep it there until they're done with their work. But that's it. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
I actually walked up on those holes during hunting season. They had just dropped all their gear down on the ground, and they were at the trucks eating, and I broke through the clearing and was like, "What the hell is this?" Looked like they were digging for a body.
Yeah, so we weren't aware.
It looked like it was like perfectly shelved, square holes. Definitely odd.
Yeah. So VHB did send Lisa some pictures of it now that it's stabilized, so she has those on her record. I have them here if you need them, too.
Yeah, it looks good. The only deviation, did you tell them with the pavers?
So the only deviation is because it's a long driveway to get in, we had to propose a, like a fire turnaround by the garage, and at the time, we proposed pavers, because we thought it'd be much more low-impact, and the fire department was okay with that, but they just installed pavement instead. It's right at the tip of the 100-foot buffer zone, so that was the only deviation from the proposed plan.
Lisa, we all set with this?
Yeah, yeah, all set.
Okay, do we have a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for 449 Brook Street?
Make a motion to... No, no, certificate of compliance for 449 Brook Street.
There a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to take that with you?
How many do you have, Lisa? Two?
Yep, I got two.
Okay.
So, Brian, hi.
Okay, next we have a land donation. It's from Louis Salhaney. This is land approximately eight acres off of Maple Swamp Road, map 6, lot 11. This offer has been made to us through the deceased relative, who is in charge of the estate. This land is behind the DR Ballfields, and it connects with another possible property approximately the same size, so that would give us two adjoining lots for somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 to 15 acres. If you, again, it's off, it's behind the Ballfields and DR. Do you have anything else to add to that, Lisa?
No, I think it's contiguous, so it'd be a great fit, and you guys just have to vote if you'd like to make a recommendation to the selectmen. As far as all the details with the deed and everything, that'll come later, so we could attend a selectman meeting and figure that stuff out.
We could offer to accept the land from Louis Salhaney, and then to recommend that the selectmen do the same.
Right.
Is there a motion to accept the land offer?
Make a motion that we select the land of Maple Swamp Road from Louis Salhaney. We recommend that the selectmen will do the same.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I just want to say, like, even though it's landlocked, you know, obviously, raw land has natural value. For people wondering, "Why would we want it?" Well, they don't...
In a way, in a way, it is landlocked, in a way, it isn't, because Dyton owns the land that the high school was on.
Yeah.
And this land is contiguous to the DR property, or Dyton property.
Yep, and it has its own natural value, is all I was trying to say, you know?
Okay, so you'll pass that over to the selectmen, and...
Yeah, we need to draft a letter.
And then, of course, they can get the paperwork, and they can determine how the deed will be done. It's going to be in the name of Dyton Conservation Commission. That is going to be the primary in the name of Town of Dyton, Dyton Conservation Commission.
Right.
So that would mean that it can never be used as a ball field.
I understand. Sounds good. You mean, we're going to give it to the birds and the bees and the butterflies and the trees?
And maybe the chestnut trees.
Love it.
Okay, we have bills payable. Lisa?
Yeah, we got to stack. So a lot of them have already been paid, but we're including things that have already been paid, and she has the new ones with signature tabs for you. But I think Paul had suggested we give you all of them, so you see all of them that were paid since the last meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Just somebody to sign?
You only sign what it says to sign, yep.
Well, that's for me to sign, yeah. I sign that.
This is all for you.
Yeah, do you want to take a look at the check, and then pass them over, and then I'll sign them? Okay, Lisa, you're going to do the agent update on 2371 County Street.
Yeah, I'm actually surprised to see this in here, so why don't we hold off on that one? We'll skip over that one, because he was expecting, we were expecting he was coming. I might have told him to come at 8:00. I might've told him to come at eight o'clock so we didn't have to sit here the whole time.
Okay, so is there a motion to put that off to a later time in the agenda?
Motion to put it off to a later time in the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Sir, you're here for...
Yeah, why don't we take him first?
Treebo.
The last one on the...
Oh, okay, maybe we can get you, let's see. Okay, all right, I'll get it here.
Yeah, just let me dig out the file, okay?
This is the new house?
Yes, sir.
I have a new email that I did not print. It came out today and I emailed you guys. I'll read it. Take a look at the file before we discuss it, please.
Okay.
Check out these pictures.
Yeah, I was there, actually, yesterday, I drive by there often. That little vernal pool is almost in the skies.
Yeah.
I have bills and the donations.
Okay, thank you. You can keep them right there.
This is on Premon Street, close to Lincoln Street, on the, I don't know if it's on the side or the side of the...
North. North.
Okay.
Yep. So, you know where the, there's a house, it's very much set back. And then there's this house, if you were coming from Middle Street. It's the house that has the porch on in front that's under construction. So, what happened with this one is I got a email from the neighbor telling me there was some problems with silt. Dave and I went out there right away and I asked the builder to put in erosion controls. I had stated that I would rather not have the straw controls, but that was what he could find. So, he put in the straw controls and we got those big storms. So, we're dealing with some silt, as you can see, in a vernal pool. The butler tells me that there's lots of species in there. He watches it every year.
Is the street higher than the side, the land? No?
I don't know.
Yes.
The crown?
Yes.
It is higher. Okay, so, so, actually, here, it looks like the land is higher than the street.
The road crown is here, comes down, dirt goes up to his house.
All right, but, yeah, this crown's on most roads rather than level. But so long as that the land begins to dip up, that water should be staying on the property, heading more northwest, I guess.
This is the lowest point at that pool.
Yeah.
That pitches into the pool.
The entire street pitches in that direction. I went out there during rainstorms as well, coming from...
You wanna just say a name?
My name's Jason Oliver. Can I stand up there or you?
No, you don't have to, as long as she can hear you, which is the speaker.
Sure, yes. I'm Jason Oliver. We're building 1334 Tremont Street. Originally, when the land was purchased, there was no idea that there was any sort of vernal pool in the general vicinity. So, it never even crossed my mind that, you know, we were causing an issue. But with that being said, yes, the road does have a crown. The vernal pool is in one of the little sections within, you know, the 200-foot area of my house, where the house is being built. I've been out there, I've watched it, and I do have, you know, some videos showing how the water is traveling, where it's coming from. And it's going down into that direction. At first, I made an attempt using the straw wall to stop the silt runoff. But with the unprecedented rains we had these last three storms, it was absolutely, yeah.
Well, we've had about seven inches of rain since January 1st. Just so that, you know, you're aware of that too.
We have another webinar.
I can see the mud here.
So I was out there last weekend. I did put up an additional barrier of protection. I have a layer of siltation fence and some straw wall. In addition to that, I ran some crushstone on the outside of it, up against the street, to try to filter some of the additional silt that might be coming from the roadway itself. I put a secondary barrier on the outside of the first barrier with an area of crushed stone to try to filter that as well. I threw some ryegrass down, which I have no idea where that is at this point because that was washed away the following day. I'm doing everything I can to mitigate the issue, not looking to cause a problem with the town or the neighbors.
Not where he is. I was on site and the only thing I'd somewhat like to see is some more protection up front on the other slope where the septic is.
So my intention is to do that. Currently, I've dug a hole on the edge of the driveway where the water is coming down and draining in. So there was a depression over there that we dug to allow the silt and anything coming off that side to be... It's currently frozen and the septic system is supposed to be installed within a few days.
Okay.
As soon as that septic system is completed, I will add an additional barrier of protection using the silt fence around the front of the property.
You did a very good job on the other side. I will say that.
Right. Watched a lot of YouTube videos.
I do.
Well, then you can teach some people around here, but...
No, I'll take a video.
I dug it out. I went about six inches down. I buried everything. I threw some wall in front of it. And I'm doing what I can. I've never run into this situation before.
So...
I'm not trying to cause a problem.
Now, eventually, you're going to lower it and cede it.
Absolutely.
Well, yeah, but right now, we can't. But the neighbor did send me an email today. He said he can't be here, which I'd rather the sick people stay home. I will not, from Robert Desvergnes. "I will not be able to attend the meeting. Sick with a cold. The second attempt at stemming the flow of water and silt into the pond did not work."
So I can say that when I was out there at the last rainfall that we had, the video that I took showing the water coming through is considerably clearer. I don't wanna say I would drink it, but it's considerably clearer. And I think that the silt that's on the top of the leaves that's still there is causing some of the additional runoff. I offered to make an attempt to go ahead and clean the leaves that are on the front of his property and in front of the vernal pool. But I was advised maybe not to do that because that may disturb some additional habitat if there is any. So, without cleaning it and without taking the silt off the top of the existing leaves, I couldn't tell you if there's something new coming or something old is there, because there was old material sitting atop the leaves.
We might benefit, and this would have to be between the two owners, obviously, because it's a civil matter, from having another siltation fence until the ground can get stabilized, just another...
To protect his pool.
Yeah.
So what I can tell you is I can go ahead and put one more, looking at his property to the right side of his driveway. And the only reason I say that I did not wanna go directly in front of it is I was just advised not to work directly there. And the reason being, I would say, is from my first initial meeting with the individual, I offered a "how are you?", you know, "nice to meet you". You were actually there, Jason. The first words that came out of the gentleman's mouth were, "That effing house should have never been put here." I know I'm not just dealing with, you know, siltation runoff. I know I'm dealing with an angry neighbor who doesn't wanna see it happen. The last thing I wanna do is begin to do work on his property and cause some additional problems and additional issues that I may have along the line of conservation.
Understood.
Yeah.
So I think we just need to, maybe, if you could add that additional controls on the east side and additional control on the west and keep monitoring it. But my other request is not to allow anyone additional to dig, well, you're installing it.
Did the driveway go in as well?
Driveway is created a four-inch perimeter on the perimeter. Everything is pitched off, you know, to that. The fence goes up against the edge of the driveway. The additional straw wall is there. And stone has been aligned between the right side of the silt fence and the driveway that's currently there.
Where is the dirt gonna go for the septic, like?
The septic system is going to be installed right on top of the front lawn, in the center where the...
To the east side of the driveway, of course.
To the...
Right-hand side.
The right-hand side of the driveway, yes.
But where will the dirt, the dirt can't stay...
The dirt has to actually be brought in. Additional dirt, based on the septic design, is required to go on top of what you currently see there.
But I want it brought in, like, at time. It's going to go in the ground, not sit there.
That's the reason I haven't done the system. I need three good, clear days. I've been planning this septic system for two weeks now and I haven't been able to get three clear days to get it installed.
So, Sunday, Monday, this is my next thing. Sunday, Monday, Tuesday is your three days, followed up by Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
Wow.
Rain, snow, rain, snow, rain, snow.
It's not the best season to be in stone.
So additionally, in addition to what I did, I also did throw a truckload of stone out on that side in front of the property, to the right-hand side of the driveway.
Okay.
Again, in hope that that is gonna create an additional filtration area.
With this kind of rain coming, just make sure you, whether you finish the septic or not, you are ready to put that in. Just be ready with what you can to stop that hillside.
It's sitting in the back of my truck right now with a shovel, kind of brewing.
Awesome. That's what I wanna hear. Because there's more unprecedented rain coming.
But tomorrow, we're only gonna get an inch of snow.
I'm not so concerned with the snow only because I don't tend to get that much. It's only when it ends the rain that I have to worry.
We like snow.
It's supposed to be mainly rain, with two droplets and one flake.
Yeah, but you gotta go by the, go by the percentage of precipitation. Some of those dates, it's five percent.
It's all rain.
What?
It's supposed to warm up. It's gonna be in the 40s.
What's the percentage of rain?
If there's seven days of rain, that means it's gonna be wet.
Yeah.
I don't remember seeing that at all.
I've got seven days of rain.
All right, so the last thing I want to happen is that we have to put a stop work on anything. Because I feel like that, at this point, the site is exposed. We put a stop work right now, then we're gonna have more problems. So, you know, I know, I've already notified, I notified the building inspector that this is happening and he's being very cooperative and I appreciate that, so.
Is he gonna build up the side a little bit and then, so when the water comes off the driveway, it actually continues to flow? I think it's an intermittent stream further to the west.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know there's a culvert there.
There's wetlands about 200 feet from the property.
On the west side of the house, way up.
Where the guardrails are on for lunch.
But the vernal pool's considered a wetland, a protectable wetland under the local bylaw, too.
Has any natural habitat been identified in there?
According to the owner, yes. I'm gonna give you this too because I don't know if anyone did. Did you give him?
I didn't have any in my work truck.
Something you can read in your leisurely, leisure time. I think this just needs to get monitored every storm of head.
I'm happy with what you did in the time you had to do it. You did a good job.
And what you saw will be in place on the opposing side as well, as soon as that septic system is completed.
Sweet.
I have no way of getting those machines out without wrecking the driveway if I build a complete system around it right now. I could put a construction gate, but that's not gonna really help and it's still gonna come out. So, I'm trying to, I put a truckload of stone out there and I'm looking to filter as best I can. And I also cleaned up the front. I don't know if you noticed that as well.
I didn't buy this weekend.
As much of a bomb site as it looked like on the front lawn.
What about straw? I mean, it would be good to put something down?
I think, I think of a straw or even just a good coating of leaves.
Yeah, oh, um...
Yeah, but you gotta get, I mean, unless...
Be careful what you ask for. I'll have every landscaper dump the leaves on that front lawn tomorrow.
They say it's battle wash after...
Yeah, that's not good.
Best thing, like, to hold a lot of back is, is raw stump chips. They gotta be ground stump chips, not screened.
Is there anything that documents that that I can follow up on?
Yeah.
Or this is the old school?
Stenham Hatch uses them all the time.
But it can't, it can't be regular mulch because it will float.
No, not mulch, but raw, ground stump chips.
Where, where would you get that?
Probably lopes, you know? But if they're not, if they're not screened, there is a percent...
Can I go ahead and do my thing with the silt fence next week? And if we have issues after the silt fence goes up, I don't wanna say next week, I retract that.
Yeah.
After that septic is completed, will continue to monitor, get the silt fence down?
Try to source, try to source heat.
With the stump chips, you can feed them in. You can make an actual burn.
Oh, yeah, because it's like packs of clay.
They both filter, but they hold back a lot of water.
I didn't even think of that.
Oh, yeah. We did, we did hundreds of miles.
So you're not talking about the entire surface. You're talking about a burn?
Yeah, a burn. Temporary burn.
When I say a burn, you either start cutting the water bars or you build a burn that way on top, three, four inches, at about two foot wide. And you make it out of stump chips. The water's not really gonna push them and will filter through. You can't just put one and try and catch three, four hundred foot of elevation. But if you put small ones in there, plus, they'll go back to nature. So if you just grade them out, roll them over, it'll be all set, so.
It will add organic material to your lawn before you have to...
Like I say, you can pack them in with excavator or even a bucket on a load. But they hold, just the way they're ground and the way they're made, they hold, so.
Thank you, Brian.
Fresh stump chips.
The state of New Hampshire uses them all the time, but the state of Massachusetts, it's a...
Fronde Pointe?
Yeah, well, they don't really Fronde Pointe. They never said it was okay, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, so fresh stump chips.
I'm gonna look into that.
I was trying to keep that in mind.
Yeah, but any, any arid stump, you know? So you check them out, but the arid ones are another one, but they're out of Ohio.
Okay. Are we all set here, Lisa?
Yeah.
We'll go back to...
If you could just plan to come to our, what do you think, the 31st or the 29th?
Let's do the 29th. I've done anything on...
February 29th?
Yeah.
I don't wanna be adding more stuff in on the 31st.
No.
We just, we got the one big item.
I didn't even mean to say it.
And we got the two-minute.
Yeah.
Okay.
But what I would like is weekly emails.
Would you like continued photos of what's going on in progress and I can send it to you?
Email to me? Yeah, that'd be great.
Does it have to be email or just continue to use that phone and bro send it to you, you don't call?
No, email's better because then I have to forward them and I rather have, yeah.
So I guess the only thing that I am a little uncertain on is, should I or should I not clean the top layer of leaves off to remove any silt that's existing?
Oh, of, around the vernal pool? No, absolutely not.
No, leave it be.
Especially if it's not your property.
Leave it be.
The species kind of, they go under those leaves.
Yeah, it'll work its way under in lighter rain. Or even the snow, when the snow comes, and it'll drip, and it'll drip down.
Well, thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jay.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks, James, Jeff, thank you.
And did you get, did I get it was emailed to you today or my assistant?
I'll take it as a...
Jay.
J what?
Earlier today.
It was late afternoon.
And I was going, I had to get this one.
Okay.
Relatively.
Oliver, Oliver.
I'll take a look at it.
No problem.
Jay, was it Oliver or Oliver?
Oliver, B-R.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Have a good evening.
You're welcome.
Okay, Lisa, you're back on 2371 County Street.
Okay, I think we need to put that off to see if Mr. De Souza comes.
Oh, okay.
Let's put that off till last.
All right, that, okay, all right, that's right. 1035 William Street.
Nothing has been heard.
Okay.
What do we wanna do? I suggest we could actually pay to record the enforcement order on his property.
We could what?
Record the enforcement order on his deed.
Oh, that's finished, that's done?
No, it's not done. We could do that.
Uh, ask Mike if we can. I don't know if we have the right to
We can't.
To
Paul figure that out?
Alter a deed.
What do you mean, Paul figured that out? I'm sorry.
To attach it to?
Oh, no, I'm not talking about taxes. I'm talking about an enforcement order getting de, you know,
I thought that's what we talked about last meeting.
Recorded at the registry. That, that's a different issue.
Oh, the 1035, yeah.
Okay, just make sure that
Of course, I'll check in with Mike.
Okay.
But other towns do it.
Okay.
Hold on, I'm gonna write this down so I don't forget.
So you're talking about putting enforcement order on deed?
Right, because we already issued the enforcement order on 1026. It was unclaimed. Just give me one second, I wanna look at the
Okay, but they did get, the constable did issue the enforcement order?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they do have it?
Yep, but we could record it. So I'll check with Mike on that. You guys did sign it, so it was ratified by you.
Okay.
That's great. You know, we had certain stipulations in it specifically.
And that could, that could have been settled this summer by what we had suggested?
Yep, we asked for a restoration plan be filed with us by December 26, 2023 and we didn't get anything. We didn't get a response.
And, and I thought his agent was in total agreement with, with what we were offering, but it was not accepted. Okay, 1420 Williams Street?
Uh, no new update on that.
Okay. Uh, 1033 Oak Street?
Uh, they hired W Engineering. Um, hold on one second. Yeah, they hired W Engineering and we should see something, um, soon. So, I mean, I'll follow up with him. Probably to the next meeting.
Okay, that's, that's again the garage that's built too close to the Rhode Island.
Yep.
Okay.
One Maris Lane, I have a call into Natural Heritage. This is the one where the owner wanted to plant a couple trees to mitigate for the fact that she cut, they cut down, so. So we have a little time because we wouldn't want them to plant right now anyway, but I need to follow up with Natural Heritage again. They're busy over there. And make sure that that's all they would require. 2097 Wheeler. The last was spoken with him, Mr. Pimento, had the wetlands flagged. He knows he needs to file a notice of intent for the shed. We haven't heard anything else, but we would like mitigation for the altered area. Uh, he has not responded to Maureen.
Okay, he's defiling, I don't know why you said.
Yep.
And he hasn't done that yet?
No.
Did, did he say who he's gonna get as a?
He did hire, he hired a wetland scientist.
Okay, do you know who it is?
Yeah, I do. She called me and said she flagged it.
All right, well, that's, that's some movement.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and so we, we
It's Pine, Pinebrook Consulting.
Okay. Now, 2420 Pleasant Street.
Okay.
You have that in small print or might be?
Yep, let me just, so, um, when the issue of the alterations along the railroad right away came up a few years ago, we actually, me, Lee and the Stormwater Committee went out and looked at a couple of these properties, including Mr. Ennis's, which we did a D E P. In hindsight, I had not sent out a violation letter to the VOT residence at map 20, lot 55. So I did that, um, did that two days ago on the 16th. Sent out a notice and asked them to get back to us within two weeks.
Okay, and again, that's a filling in on the track. Oh, is it filling in on the tracks or filling in a wetland or buffer zone?
It's wet, wetland and buffer zone.
Wetland, okay, within the B and W, okay.
B B W.
B B W. Uh, okay, now, is that B B W a result of earlier filling by someone else?
Maybe. We don't know, but it's, now it's jurisdictional. I mean, it's holding water, it's developed vegetation. It's also connected hydrologically to the Taunt River.
Right, does that stream go, it moves out along Hart Street and then the Nice Wood, south to the east?
Yep, yep. I didn't know.
How far is that away from the other property that we're dealing with?
One lot over.
Yeah, maybe a hundred feet at the most, right? I mean, I could pull that up. You wanna, do you wanna see it? I'll pull it up. And I didn't know if Nancy wanted to say anything. Did you want to call Nancy up if she wanted to say anything on this?
Hello, Stormwater Committee, did you say this? It was quite a while ago. It was when we were down there looking at all those properties.
Yeah.
Uh, the day we were there, as a matter of fact, the pool of water was a bright green, like Kelly. The owner met us there. Um, he had had, I don't know how many times, had a mosquito company come out because of the mosquito problem and, and the mosquito company told him pretty much, you're wasting your money. As long as that water is there, you're gonna have mosquitoes.
Yeah.
We looked at that in relationship to the other properties along the railroad bank, both east and west, and there was a narrowing. It appears that it was narrowed or, or the railroad bed was made narrower by whoever built the house. He, the person there that's now bought this house, so we think that the problem was created by the previous owner, but of course, this person inherited it when he bought it. So, um, it was left that since the violations down there are more related to conservation issues, conservation took the lead and we're, we're working, if you will, affect with you because when your problems are solved, it's gonna pretty much address ours. But right now, it's, it's the fact that there has been filling. The major problems have been filling, which has caused water to dam.
Yeah.
Uh, we did have one property owner, the, the one, um, um, south of the worst offender, uh, who has the last name, but they're not related. That gentleman did clean his property when we checked that property and then it was inspected again by Mr. Pilling. There was, um, the, there was, there was debris that had been dumped and it was, it was pretty much grass, but there was brush and there was also an old window frame, like a broken thing. And he, we were told, you gotta clean up that stuff because that's not organic waste or anything. And we told him, you can't fill it anymore. And what he said was that he was gonna create a pile in another section of the ad where he could dump his clippings, but he was not gonna be dumping them out back. So on that one, the last thing that I heard from Mr. Pilling was that he had done the inspection and that had been resolved, so he's off the list.
Yeah, there's one correction on this. I have on this 2420, but it's 2470 Pleasant. So that was typo.
I was gonna ask.
Good, good catch. You doing the office?
No.
So did the enforcement go to the right address or is it just wrong members?
It went to the VOTS, so I hope so. You would think the postmaster would know. Um, but I'll, I'll check Monday. I don't have access to that right here. Oh, actually, I do. I have the slip. Hang on. I think I have the slip. Yep, I do.
2470.
It went to 2420. Well, we send it Monday to 2470. It went to the correct people, Robert and Rachel VOTS.
Well, hopefully it was delivered by the neighbor.
Yeah, right? Okay.
Okay, are we completed for today?
Um, well, we still have
Not, we haven't shown.
One more item, um, so let's see.
That's 23, 2371?
Right. I don't know if that means that he was never actually retained after all.
Is it worth shooting the text?
Huh?
Is it worth shooting the text?
I don't have his text.
I was somewhat happy after our meeting.
I know.
This is something to be, to go to Matt as well, that, that the, um, the person who went and planned the restoration did not show. And who was it that was hired by him?
John De Souza.
Okay, because that's gonna be something interesting. Why was there a no show? Was he, uh,
Sick?
Told not to or what?
Oh, I don't know.
No, I know, we don't know. But I'm just saying
Yeah.
that's something for Matt to know
Right.
when he deals with it down the line.
All right, yep.
Okay, uh, I, I think we've completed everything on the agenda.
Can I ask a question, please?
Well, that comes next, public input.
Yeah.
I was at the planning board meeting last night. I was at your last, um, conservation commission meeting. I'm trying to get an understanding.
Nancy.
I'm sorry. I was at the planning board meeting last night and I was at the last conservation meeting.
I'm trying to find out, get an answer. What is the situation with Forest Hills? Your commission is meeting and discussing. The planning board denied the permit. The Stormwater Committee says, we have jurisdiction, but we don't know what to do or where to go. Of course, the, the representative is telling us butt out. But, so I'm confused in that, uh, the planning board said, yeah, it's still denied by us, it's in court. But I was just wondering, why is Concom meeting to discuss Forest Hills? Are you obligated to?
Okay, what, what has happened is that we have had a change in membership, three new members.
Okay.
And this, this has been going on for two and a half years. Under the Mullins rule, every, uh, the quorum, and we don't have quorum because it's three new members, a quorum had to have been present for each of the major considerations.
Okay.
So on January 29th at 6:00 P. M., we are going to have a full membership and they are, in, in approximately one hour's time, they are going to present everything that they have presented in previous meetings, so that will make our commission legal voters.
Okay.
Now, what will happen is that Beta has already submitted to us the, um, the, the paperwork on their thoughts. So, uh, while, while you're saying it, I'm gonna ask these guys to go over the Beta review even, completely, even before, uh, Forest Hills makes their presentation. And then we will, and then what's gonna happen is then at our 29th meeting, uh,
31st.
February 29th meeting, we will then vote to either accept or reject the proposal based on full membership vote.
And, and I do wanna say one thing for the record, just so everybody understands. The I trust decided they didn't think they needed to re-notify the abutters for reopening. They need to be notified, so I'm having Maureen do that. Monday, she's sending them out. We already did most of the labels and things like that.
So
Yeah.
we're gonna make sure that it's done correctly. So all the abutters are gonna be re-notified of the re, that, that the hearing has been reopened
Okay.
and that a full presentation. And we're gonna be cautious because they cannot, they cannot present new material and that's why Beta's not being, being called in because they're gonna refuse to repay Beta for what they've already done. So they, so it's gonna be kept to the exact same material and that's why I've said, look over all of Beta's material and, and be aware so that on the 29th of February, we can make a vote to either accept or reject.
So Beta did this work for you?
Yep.
On a peer review?
All right, okay. All right, well, this clears it up because when I said to planning, why is conservation discussing this? And he said, we don't know. But now I understand.
We weren't discussing the project, we were just trying to get a form.
Oh, wait, she, but I think she has a broader question. She's wondering why we're hearing the project at all.
No, 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 now I understand.
Oh, okay.
When, I thought that when, um, I wasn't aware of what you just described to me about having to have a quorum and you've got to change a membership, so you've gotta educate the new people so everyone understands the same thing, which now I understand.
That's the Mullin, Mullin rule.
So
that we were not aware of, we're
Nothing to do with Mike Mullin.
No, no.
Just so everybody knows.
The, the, uh, no, um, my only question was if it's, when I first heard that you, it was being, it was on your agenda, I thought, wait a minute, did somebody forget to tell us it's back on? So that's why I was at planning and now I understand exactly. At this point in time, uh, Stormwater is still waiting because we're saying, yeah, we're gonna weigh in. Planning Board is, is saying, we denied it, it's in court. So they're waiting to hear if, if what the court is gonna rule relative to the two reasons.
So the 29th of February, you'll have your answer. That is, that is the date, it's already been set up that that's when we're voting.
Yep.
It's already been set.
Okay, okay, all right. Now, that's why, like I say, I, 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 because I've been told so many times by the proponent, basically butt out, and I say to him, no, we'll be there. And when I was concerned, what happened that I don't know about and should we be active, you know, because we are gonna do something, but now I understand, so I'll just wait and I'll wait for the time to come.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Uh, it doesn't look like there's anyone else here in the public to, to ask. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, adjourn, that's, uh, eight thirty.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Lisa.